And welcome to the Rutland Town Planning Commission. This is January 27th of 2022. Let's start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic, for just that. One nation.
One nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible.
And liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for attending. First order of business is the agenda.
Is everybody here voting?
Everybody is.
I make a motion to approve.
Thanks, Jerry. For a second. Andy, okay, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Um, there's just three of us in the room tonight, so it doesn't look like any public comment. Someone might... I don't know if we went to the police department.
I always see two in the room.
I'm here too, Norm.
Don't forget Bill. And now we're joined by Dana.
Now there's three. We're gonna really confuse you. Missed the approval of the agenda.
Oh, darn.
I know. Might have went somewhere.
So Norm, you're still voting, since Sherman's not here.
Expect to show up.
Okay, um, I don't have anything for new business unless Bill, anything's come in last minute. Okay, we'll move down to old business. And Grandpa's Knob, the wind project there is the first on the list. They sent down a new simulation, visual simulation from Cold River Road. And we have not heard back about the nighttime viewability, if you will, yet. And they also said they're waiting for some information from the Rutland County Audubon for birds and maybe migration issues at the proposed tower. What does everyone think about the new simulation?
Barb, this is Howard.
Yeah.
I'd like to say a couple of things here. First of all, I can't figure out where on Cold River Road this panoramic view was taken. And further, they say it's a distance of 9.75 miles from the tower. The Cold River Road, from my measurements, is like seven miles. And if you go 9.75 miles, it puts you down near the Rutland Airport. And the elevations, the elevation that they give for... Forget what it was here, the elevation of... Well, I can't see it quite quickly, but anyways, the elevation, I think is way off too, from what they're talking about Cold River Road. The elevation sits more down near the Rutland Airport. But this, to me, I couldn't figure out, looking at this photo, where in the world this is.
You know what I think it is, Howard? I think it's right across the street from that, from that Ray's Ranch. It's like the Hubbard Zone, the first house on the left going up to the top of the hill. If I looked at it the other day, if you walk across the street right there is where that fence is that you can see in the foreground.
Okay.
So if you walk across the street from that house, there's a fence that goes around Hubbard's old fields there. And you could see that cross angle where the corner of that fence is.
And those little stones, several different piles of stones right there by the road.
It's right in that general area. I was driving, so I didn't really, you know, stop and point it out exactly. But you can see that fence right there.
Well.
Okay, it's very confusing with that panoramic view. But anyways, the distance to me, the distance and elevations, I question them. I don't... I don't think it's right. I think, you know, they're saying 9.75 miles. I think it's more like seven miles, from where I measure that, a straight line. Anyways, that's my...
Andy?
I just, my question is, is that the, in the left side of the photo, there's a large telephone pole, and then there's a silo. Is that roughly in front of Hubbard's?
The silos are at the farm at Hubbard's, yeah.
Okay, then I know right where we are then. Thank you.
Yes, just north of it, just north of the farm.
So what I find weird about this simulation is that there's only one tower. And there should be a communications tower at what we're looking at and a simulation of what the wind turbine tower would look like.
There was one, Barbara. There was one.
One picture that had both. It was the bigger one, the blow up one, the one that was zoomed in. Another picture. That shows both.
I mean, that being...
The, yeah.
That being the communications.
Yeah.
The white blades are behind, I think, where there's the communication.
Not only are they behind it, you're correct.
Yeah.
But they're not really white. They're almost translucent on that picture, so.
And they're not at the top of the tower.
Oh, that's not, that's the existing tower.
The base of the tower, right. The base of the tower extends down here, but not the tower. The wind turbine is down here, hidden behind them. Now, that is, that grayish line, I think, is the communication tower.
It is. That's the existing tower that you're looking at.
Okay.
And that's the simulated turbine arms, yeah, behind. I think.
It may be difficult with today's computers. I just think that, you know, it doesn't sound, you wouldn't think so.
Yeah.
But I just wish that...
I went to the site, and they do have the simulation up on their home site. You can find it from Cold River Road, and you zoom in and...
You can hardly see it.
You can hardly see it.
It's one of those things where, yeah, and it's... Let's face it, they're just not showing a realistic view. And for whatever reason, I mean, you know, when it comes down, it comes down to money. They don't, you know, it's just, it's not a realistic view of what's there. It just isn't.
But this picture here, Jerry, is zoomed in. You can't see that from Cold River Road. This is what you're gonna see from Cold River.
No, it isn't. No, you step up on that grass right there by that fence, and you look across to that knoll, and it doesn't look anything like that picture that shows the fence.
This one here?
It's not even close. It's the same thing as me taking a picture of Bill over there. He looks so much further away than he sits. I understand that these guys are experts, but I'm sorry, a picture doesn't tell.
Okay.
You know, it just doesn't.
And I'm not sure a thorough job was done in this simulation.
It looks about halfway in between these two photos.
Oh, halfway in between?
You stand there, and you look across at those mountains, and they don't look like that. They look like they're right there, and Grandpa's Knob is right there.
Because you can't see anything on this.
You sometimes just drive and just go slowly by there and just look to your right or come the other way.
I have to do that. This is heading, this is heading north or heading west, right?
Yeah, that's heading, yeah. If they just would be, you know, honest, that's all, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, that, I'm a little concerned about that.
Yeah, none of us are gonna change this probably, but if they were just honest with everybody, it'd be a nice thing.
Yeah, so.
Hey, guys. Oh, just really quick. Um, so I drove up by there too, and I looked out because I was curious, out of Hubbard. So to the left of, so you're not confusing it with the one on Quarterline Road, are you, that you can?
No.
Okay, cool. All right, perfect. Just wanted to make sure. Because that one, you can really see, like, in the foreground kind of mountains. And then, so that one's all the way to the left when you're looking. And then there's the Grandpa's Knob that you can't, you know, you can kind of barely see the tower, looking out from Cold River. And then if you go further north or to the right, you can see another one as the, you know, the hill gets... There's like a taller tower off to the right. So there's really, from Cold River Road, I could see three towers. There's one to the left, the one in the middle, that's on Grandpa's Knob, and then the one all the way to the right. Just in case you guys go out, so you can see which one we're talking about.
You sure the one, you sure the one, Mary, no, excuse me, Mary Beth is not, all the way to the right is not Grandpa's Knob? I think the one on the left is the one that's up over West Rutland. The one that's in the middle.
The one in the middle is the one, let's see.
I think, I think you'd find that the one in the middle is the one that's up above by the, where they jump off for the hang gliding. Yeah. And there's a communications tower up there.
Right.
The one to the right is Grandpa's Knob, all the way to the north.
Okay, so I was thinking the one by the, by that launch area was the one, okay.
What's that? What's the leftmost one? What is that?
The leftmost is the community, yeah, and Quarterline Road. That's the one all the way to the left. Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
But if you, if you stand, I'm not saying it's all one point of view, but if you stand and you look at it, they're minimizing the view. It's gonna be pretty dramatic. And right now, when you look at his pictures, look at those pictures, and what do you see? You see green mountains.
Yeah.
Wait till you see white blades that are 50 feet above that tower. And just, just be honest, that's all, you know.
Yeah.
Beyond that, that is what it is.
It will be a rotating tower too, so the sun will hit it differently.
Right, depending on which way the winds blow.
Yeah. So, well, um, there's, we still need some other information from them. And I can pass along that we have some questions about the simulation, if that's okay, in addition to the other things we're waiting for. And, you know, we'll want progress reports from them anyway, as they go through their studies. Yeah, Howard?
Yeah, and somebody else ought to check out that distance. I think they're, I think they're way off on their distance and elevation.
I agree with the elevation. I was looking at that too, and they show, the simulation, the blade looks like it's just about equal to the top of the tower.
Yeah.
And if you look at the elevations there, even though it's over the back of the mountain, I think you said 90 feet or something. If you add up all those, if you add up where that sits, where it goes, I still think that the blade's gonna be 70 feet above that tower.
And the elevation I'm talking about is on Cold River Road, where they say it's 715 feet. And I think at that point is a lot, lot higher than that. And 715 feet is more down by the airport, is what I saw. I'm not sure I've got it 100% right, but you guys ought to just take a look at it.
I'd just like to say, excuse me, first of all, Sherman is here, Barbara, or was a minute ago, so I won't vote. Um, but if somebody's going out there, could they give me a call? I went out, and I, I don't know whether it was my limited vision or lack of familiarity, but I pulled up to Hubbard's Farm, and I just didn't see very much. So I could benefit from a companion at another visit if somebody takes it. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, anything else on this topic? All right, we'll move down to our ordinance work that's ongoing. And we have a committee with Andy, Howard, I think I said I'd help out too. And Norm is running, he's got a lot of stuff going, so he would like to drop off from this particular committee. So there's three. Anything new to report from, on this, that I don't know about?
I can say I have done nothing, so I apologize. We should be moving along, Leonard, but have not.
Yeah, so, um, okay. How about this? So we've got, we said probably the priority is the ordinance, trying to keep track of construction in town. And we got some ideas from VLCT. I think we should go back to them and let them know, give them an idea of what we're interested in drafting, and have them draft something up for us. We've got, we've got the budget for that, and then we can run that by the town attorney afterwards. But I think they already gave us two choices. One would be similar to a building code, and there'd be a building inspector. And then another option was a subdivision amendment. And there would still need to be someone assigned to be in charge of that, whether it's administrative officer, kind of like what we have for the stormwater ordinance, or a zoning administrator, which we don't have. But I think we could probably, since we don't have much that would conflict with a new ordinance, I think they could draft something fairly easily for us. And they might need our subdivision regulations and maybe a few other things. How's that for a plan? Kind of move forward on this one? Norm?
I guess I'm confused. I thought when Howard was speaking about this at the last meeting, he was looking at something much more minimal than what you're talking about. If at your meeting, you came to a different conclusion, that ought to be clear.
Um, okay, maybe I need to refresh my memory. Uh, I don't see anything in the minutes. My memory's failing me right now.
Howard's here with us, I think.
Yeah, I am. I spoke up a while back about the thing that, you know, we had a building permit that was somewhat working so far. But it seems now that if we're gonna do anything at all, that we need to go, we gotta dig a little deeper, and we got to have somebody to administer what we're trying to do here with the building permits and everything. I'm not sure, but where we're at.
My recollection is that Howard felt that basically what we, we were getting notice. And that seems to be the biggest problem, as I understand it. And so I'm just, and that committee was gonna walk around what we had. So I'm not necessarily opposed to the direction that Barbara's going in. I'm just confused as to whether that committee met, and is this what came out of it?
It doesn't sound like there's been any meetings.
Nobody met since the last time. The last minute said that the group was going to meet within the next week, but I don't think that happened. And if each of you has said that you haven't done anything, then it doesn't seem like there was a meeting. So nothing's changed since the last meeting. That's my interpretation.
So it sounds like to me a meeting has to kind of take place to figure out where we're headed.
I think that'd be good.
So Howard and Andy, would you like to meet first before we make any decision on this?
Sure.
I'd be happy to help out if getting that many people's a problem, or if it's not a problem, excuse me.
Um, three's kind of the limit, but yeah, if you want to be the third person.
Freeze you up.
Okay.
If one of these guys would just let me know when, I'll be there or be on the phone or whatever.
Three's the limit to not have it, you know, have it be posted and noticed and all that sort of stuff. So it works. It's more of a subcommittee.
Once you hit, once you hit a quorum, you have to notice it. So it's four for us, yeah.
Yep. So, okay. Andy, Howard, and Jerry. And if you need any names or anything, just let me know. Names or contacts, these outside groups. So we had a couple other things we were looking at for ordinances. Noise, and then we were looking, we're gonna look at firearms. I've had a conversation with a resident who has a real issue at his property with, he says there's some noise, he says there's smell. It's with larger animals. This person is willing to come to speak to us. He is a businessman in town, and he has some, he has some real concerns. And he's interested in helping us, you know, kind of direct this, where this ordinance might want to go. So should I ask him in at the next meeting?
I would think he might want to meet with the committee, but maybe he should meet with all of us.
But we don't have a committee for this one yet.
Oh, I thought that was under the subdivision committee, excuse me.
No, we don't have a committee for this, and let's just leave the sub, the one subcommittee we have, just have them work on the construction one.
It seems like to me that maybe we should kind of figure out where we're going with it before we start. It just seems like we might, you know, I don't know, just seems like there might be a little bit of... It may be tough for us to even help him or see where he's going until we know that there's either a subcommittee together or we've figured out we're gonna have either a noise ordinance or we're gonna have a small animal or an animal, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Or maybe we have, and I dismissed it.
I'm not sure he's looking for answers right now. I think he wants, he mostly wants to explain his situation, and...
But if we can't help him, is that, if we don't have anything to help him, is that a wise thing to do until we figure out how we could help him? Am I wrong?
No, not necessarily. You're not necessarily wrong. But he knows that we're striving to come up with something.
Not against talking to anybody, but I just wonder if we're gonna kind of spin him in a circle that we don't have any answers for him or ideas yet, is all, that's...
I think he might be at a point where he just wants to be heard.
Sure.
I think.
He can come to any public meeting, right?
Yeah. Norm?
No, I would think he ought to come in and let us know his feelings and his concerns. I don't see, and we can make it clear that this is just preliminary. We haven't decided whether we're gonna go forward, make jury's points very clear, which are well taken. And, but it's informational only at this point. I mean, if he's the only person in town with a concern, it's not, we may not be able to address it. If others should support him, maybe we need to listen. But I don't think having a committee first to address the livestock issue without knowing what it is makes, makes a lot of, is not efficient.
I would just invite him to come to our next meeting, perhaps, and make some comments and public comment. And then it's addressing something that's on the agenda. So there's, there's a, there's a connection there. He can say whatever he would like to say. The planning commission and the committee can decide how to take it from there. And then he gets an opportunity to be heard, as Barbara was saying. And maybe that will translate into something. But, I mean, that makes the most sense if we're trying to blend a variety of interests into the same initiative. So that would be my suggestion.
I agree with that, but, and then just maybe to make sure he understands that we're not equipped to do anything about it yet. And just...
But it would be part of the information gathering process, right, Mary Beth?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and I don't know if the things we're looking at, livestock and maybe some, some noise, more noise restrictions, are all separate ordinances or for looking at, or, you know, if there's a possibility that this is all gonna roll into one sort of, oh, public hazard or something kind of ordinance and...
Public nuisance.
Public nuisance, yep. That's the legal term, right? So... Okay, so I'll let him know that he's, he's welcome to come speak to us next time in three weeks. So I think that takes care of the ordinance, ordinances for tonight. There's also a subcommittee on all of the recommendations, the four pages of recommendations that were made in the enhanced energy plan. And that subcommittee has met once. We've got another meeting next week, and that's Norm and Sherman and myself. And what we're, what we're pulling together is some ideas for a survey. The select board said it would be open to surveying residents to help us prioritize those actions. So we're trying to get those four pages down to something that is, will be easier for people to go through and, and figure out what is important to them. Norman, Sherman, anything you want to add to that?
No, it's, what you said is what I, my understanding is and where I think we are.
I reluctantly agree.
Can you get everybody on the screen, on the television?
Everybody's on video is on the screen.
Yeah.
Can you put the people who are not on video on the screen?
No, well.
I think there's a setting for that, but...
Do you want to see their names?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay. Sherman doesn't have his camera on.
Sherman, do you have your camera off for?
At this point.
Okay, moving right along. Report from the select board meeting. I don't think there is much from the last meeting. Bill did?
No, there wasn't.
I wasn't actually there, read the minutes. Okay. Pocket Park update. There is something there. On the 18th, GMP met with the town, Mary, and I was there as the administrator of the grant. A draft, the meeting was about the site. It's mostly owned by GMP, but the town does own portions of it. So to get access to that site for a park, that's what this meeting was about. So a draft MOU for access or an easement or what comes out of that, that's being drafted right now. Or being, they're looking at examples in other parts of the state. And there is still a question about some of the cultural resources there as part of the licensing, the relicensing of the dam there for GMP. They do need to do another assessment, and they'll be working with the state on that, the State Historic Preservation Office. And so what we haven't decided is who is going to pay for that yet. So that's, that's an open question. And, and I guess also, you know, what's not known right now is if there are some critical cultural resources there. I mean, it is a flood zone, so there's probably not much down by the river. But if there's something else on the hillside or some other areas on the site, that's gonna be looked at or needs to be looked at. That needs to be done for the licensing, the relicensing anyway. But there's some discussion whether the town should help pay for that, since it wants to put a park there. And...
But if it's, if it's necessary for the relicensing, why is it even a question? Who pays?
Um, if I remember correctly, it's because it's being used, and maybe some of it's going to be, some of it's gonna be disturbed because of the park. Whereas before, it's more like in a wild, natural kind of a setting. So, you know, if we're putting parking lots and putting in steps or trails, that's a little bit different than it just sitting there by the river and by the dam.
So it depends on whether it's being disturbed or not disturbed, and GMP wants us to pay for it if it's being disturbed and we're gonna...
I wouldn't say they want, they just said, you know, here's a question, you know, who should pay for this? There was, there was, it wasn't an ask. it wasn't an ask and it wasn't a demand.
No, I, yeah, I was just, the way, the way you phrased it led me to believe that GMP was asking us to pay for anything that we might be disturbing that we would be using as part of the, that's the way I interpreted it.
No, it's, it's one more step in the cultural resources process. And, uh, it's just, it's, it's an open discussion right now. How it should be performed or, or, you know.
So is it a significant cost or do we have any idea what the order of magnitude?
I, I don't, I don't. But I got the impression. What's that, Howard?
I see. I think Green Mountain Power should be left to handle it if you
Yeah, I, I think I think they will. I, I think it was mostly a matter of sa- of saying, you know, there might still be an issue coming up. And, oh, I, I think they have two years to do this assessment. And timing was another thing, like, should we know this sooner than later? Um, so there were a number of things that were involved with that.
Yep.
Another, uh, part of the, uh, pocket park is that the, a public meeting has been scheduled for, this will not be on one of our meeting nights because I think there might be, um, more people there than we want to, um, have at one of our meetings and, and take up our time. So it'll be March third at 6:00 PM. We'll have this room open and, uh, it'll be on Zoom as well. And GMP is anxious, um, to, for that meeting to happen and to get what they call, um, the next generation of the design for the park. In other words, you know, you, w- w- we've come up with some ideas and, you know, what else is, does the public want to see there? And then since getting that to the select board to see how they'd like to proceed. Then we can give that to GMP. Okay, that's the pocket park. Mary Beth, do you, do you have anything to, with all the work you're doing on the side?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, the Northwood Park mountain bike stuff, um, Mary, uh, Barbara and Mary reviewed the application for Act 250 for the mountain bike. Um, so I'm working through Mary's com- well, both of your comments. Um, and then I'll come back to you both with, you know, kind of next step before I do, do anything. Um, so, but Mary was thinking and I think it's pretty much ready to submit. Um, let's see, and then for the Vella Montreux, that is starting to move forward a little bit. Um, we had a meeting recently, just the Vella Montreux Association people and, uh, Shelley Lutz, who has been working with me on the Rutland, um, kind of section of Vella Montreux. She obviously does a lot of work with Pine Hill Park. Um, and, um, so we were starting to, we decided to start meeting with towns. Um, just to let them know generally what the project is. Um, just kind of to seek their general support and kind of start a process of like gathering ideas and, um, where it might make sense to put the, the trail. So, um, I think we've mentioned a little bit to the Rutland Town Select Board, but, um, I thought it'd be good to get on their agenda and, um, give them a little spiel of what exactly the trail is and, um, see if they have questions and kind of start involving them with the, the process. Um, so I think we're going to talk to them the second week of February, um,
This is not that easy to get on their agenda.
Yeah, yeah, they're so busy. I just, um, so, and then we're going to talk to Rutland City, um, February 7th. So I just kind of wanted to put it all out there to the towns at once. I don't think we're, you know, going to one before the other or anything. So, um, just wanted to make sure on the agenda and anyone who has questions is welcome to reach out in the meantime. Um, we actually met today with, um, Mary Ann Goulet, who's the West Rutland Town Manager. Um, cause she expressed, um, excitement, interest in becoming involved and they have different trail projects going on in West Rutland. So we wanted to make sure that we kind of coordinate and, um, so that was a good meeting too. Um, I think for the Rutland Town side that, that I'm kind of, um, going to be focusing on, um, it would be nice at some point, it's not a huge rush, but over the next couple of weeks, um, maybe after we get some of the ordinance stuff out of the way, if maybe two people could help me sit down sometime and, um, look through the maps and talk about where we, you know, I could share where we're thinking and, um, can talk about kind of ideas for where the trail can go. Uh, I don't know if we're quite, well, we talked about reaching out to landowners. I think we're not quite there yet. Although I did tell you guys about meeting with Rutland City about the, um, trying to just get into Northwood Park. Cause we're focusing on basically connecting dots. So there's where the trail ends up, the end, end of Old Turnpike Road in Mendon. There's another dot, um, at the new Forest Service Station where they'll be parking and a trail loop there. Another dot at Northwood Park, we're putting in mountain bike trails and then to Pine Hill Park. Um, and then I don't know if West Rutland has designated mountain bike trails, but they have a lot of trails around. Um, and then ultimately get down to Pulteney to the Slate Valley Trails. Um, that's a huge network of mountain bike trails down there and, um, and all of these, so you say mountain bike, but it's multiple, you know, the whole Vella Montreal is going to be multiple use, so bikes, walking. And what we've, um, kind of been thinking for Rutland Town, Rutland City and West Rutland is that we'll probably have two kind of parallel tracks. So one is the easy, quick one, which is following sidewalks and some roads, um, not ideal, but obviously the easier routes, you don't have to cut trails and work with landowners and then kind of a longer term goal that would be going through private land, um, that is more of a, um, kind of the trail experience that people are looking for. But that's going to take a lot more time, um, and work, to work with all the landowners and, um, so that's kind of our, our, our plan for right now, but, um, maybe at the next meeting, we can talk about whether we're ready to meet in a smaller group, but, um, I know that everyone's working on a lot of different things in subcommittees, so, um.
What would be the plan of action for, for this group? What was, what were the first set of things you needed done?
Um, so, so the, um, well, after you talked to the select board to talk about the general, um, plans, um, the, the plan for meeting with the smaller group would be to sit down, um, with a computer on the screen and to look at the, um, parcel data, like the VCGI, who owns what? Um, you know, stream crossings, because that's one of the reasons we're focusing on roads also. And existing sidewalks and paths, um, is just, you know, crossing East Creek and Mendon Brook and, um, you know, uh, we don't want to be building bridges basically, um. And then maybe identifying a few key large landowners that, um, get them on board first and then try to infill in between. Um, but that would be the, the idea when we meet as a smaller group is just to sit in front of a screen and look at, um, landowners and different options.
Okay, yeah. Maybe it'd be worth trying to get the word out to, um, other townspeople as well.
I've been thinking about that too, like, um, well, I have a feeling, once we start talking to the select board and the Rutland City Alderman, it will probably end up in the paper. Um, but I have been thinking about, yeah, right, when is the right time to just make it public or what's, I, I don't know, I don't really know. I've been kind of deferring to Shelley and the Vella Montreux Association people because they've done this before and I haven't. Um, so I'm kind of just there to help and be kind of the speaker. But as far as like timing of where things go, I'm kind of deferring to them on, but the, the only real deadline that we have looming is, um, there are a few grants that the applications will start, um, in June. Um, that's a, I, I can't remember the name of the grant, but Mary Ann was talking about it today. So that's kind of in the back of our mind. By June, we'd like to have a pretty good idea of, um, where we'd like the trail to go.
Mary Beth, if you, if you want, uh, some help looking at it, just you and somebody from this group, I'm happy to give you some time.
Okay.
Uh, probably not during the day and, you know, either in the evening or even on a weekend if you've got a half hour, an hour, I'll be happy to connect with you.
Okay, and we can look at it up at this, we can do it virtually, um, if that's easier too, and just have it up on the computer screen and
Sure.
Yeah.
Sherman?
Yeah, Mary Beth, um, just two things. It sounds like what we're talking about in terms of, of, of having a, a final uh, trails that we can, you know, that's usable, uh, is, is, is quite a distance in the future.
Yes, it is, several years.
And my other, okay, and my other question is, in looking at it and looking at the grants that you're talking about, are, are, is there going to be an attempt to do it in segments in terms of finance and in terms of the money?
We were talking a little bit with Mary Ann about that today, um, so probably just a few towns going together and the grants would be like a planning grant or a study. Um, so like she mentioned, um, like this study that had been done a few years back between West Rutland and Proctor and so it's probably about the route that would go at this point.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah. And yeah, feel free to keep bringing this up to this group. And, and getting some volunteers or just ma- maybe ideas, maybe we can have, you know, a little mini work sessions at some of our meetings.
Yeah, with everybody.
Parcels, yeah. Norm?
Oh, you're muted.
Just a quick question. First of all, you're doing terrific work. Uh, I think we're all very grateful and impressed. Um, is there any plan to have this connect or intersect with the Rutland, with the bike path that Sherman was so involved in?
Yes, yes, that's, um, our idea for getting from Pine Hill Park down, um, across the river, basically, well, or getting down to like Rutland Town. Um, and so Mary Ann has been, has worked with, I think Paul Gallo is working on the, the creek path and so there, and they've, this has already been kind of in the works. They've been wanting to do, um, to connect West Rutland to the creek path and kind of improve the existing bike path and she, um, and, uh, they would like to connect to like Castleton and, um, or that way, Castleton over to the rail trail. So that was something that we talked about too, um, how we can all kind of work together and make this. Um, you know, ideally it would be, so there'd be the Vella Montreal, but then there's also going to be spur trails. So you can go from town to town and not have to drive. Um, so even if the trail and go through like say Castleton, if we had a, you know, an option to go up there, an option to go to Killington and, you know, um,
Sounds great.
It's a big hill though, Mary Beth, going to Killington. Not sure I want to do that one.
It's not the way to do it. The idea is to come from Killington.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right, right. And we joked about that one of the meetings, like you take the bus up and then ride down.
Sounds good to me.
Just make sure it's the electric bus.
Right.
Um, yeah, so I'm thinking of the pocket park too. Maybe we should have some bike stands or something there.
Yeah, right, because it's going to go right through, yeah.
I don't think we want the bikes on the trails because they're, you know, it's not the greatest terrain and they're not going to be real sturdy trails, but
Yeah.
But maybe a stop, yeah.
They'd be up in the parking, parking areas if they're not in the way.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thanks, Mary Beth.
You're welcome. Thanks, guys.
Hey, Howard, um, our last meeting, we had a discussion about, um, a permit, a water and sewer permit that came through and, but we haven't heard about a subdivision. This was up on Killington Avenue.
Yep.
Anything new, new on that?
I, I sent her a letter and, uh, asked her some questions about it. In fact, I copied Bill on it and I haven't heard it, heard back anything, none of it.
Anyone been by the site to see?
No.
Middle of winter, probably.
I, I can do a follow-up. I guess I better because she didn't respond, but she's just kind of, I don't know. Going on, I'll re- I'll respond and try to see if she did get my first letter and then maybe I'll get something back from her. I don't know, but I'll, I'll, I'll give it a try because it's been quiet, been siloed.
Right, yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, we just, we just have some friendly questions of what their plans are.
Sure.
So, yeah, thanks. Anything else? Anyone has? Okay, I guess we can move down to the minutes from January 6th.
Move to approve the minutes from January 6th.
Thank you. Jerry, okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Does anyone have any comments about the minutes?
I just had one comment. I thought minutes were very clean and easy to read. Top of page two, number one. What's so funny?
Uh, something happened in the room here, Norman.
Oh, okay.
Don't, don't mind us.
Don't worry about it, yep.
Um, and this is really technical. Um, it says the committee of McCain, Cohen, Burgess and Pulling has not met yet and somehow I think it just ought to be three of us because we had talked about the fourth wasn't appropriate. Just take my, my name off of that.
Yeah, but you agreed at the meeting, so that's why, um, Bill has you in there.
Why, yeah.
You will disappear from next month's meeting minutes, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, and there was some discussion about how, how long, how big a subcommittee can be, so we weren't, there wasn't certainty that night either.
And it didn't meet, so it's irrelevant.
Well, it says the committee has not met, but the committee isn't properly constituted even at this point. That's my, if nobody else is concerned. I'm not, I just raised it.
And the committee's going to do some time.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're uh, we're, we're just, we're just being silly.
Sometime next week.
Oh.
I think we're good.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes as is, wow.
No amendments to it.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me, I don't think.
Stan.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Andy. Yeah, and Norm, you have a big red X over your screen. Only I can see it, but
Is that a suggestion?
Could be.
Hollywood Squares.
All right. If there's nothing else, thank you, and we'll see you in three weeks.
You want a motion to adjourn?
What's the date, Barbara?
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn until February seventeenth.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.